Good morning, everyone, and we'll get started. Thank you so much for being here. I'll call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners work session for March the 8th, 2022 to order at this time. And Marshall already brought up the list that Jason just held up. And as far as elected officials, like Sheriff Gary Gullett is here, and any of the mayors here today? We didn't elect you, did we, Terry?
No.
All right. I don't guess I'm missing anybody then. Always afraid I will miss somebody, and I usually do. So we're delighted to have Ms. Becky Shaley, who is the Senior Leader of Firestar Ministries, and her heart that she's wearing has a fire on it. Becky, thanks for being here and leading us in an invocation and then pledge to the flag.
Father, in the midst of all of the darkness and the violence that's in our world, we come to you today, acknowledging as did King David, that yours, oh Lord, is the greatness, the power, the glory, the victory, and the majesty. Everything in the heavens and on earth is yours, oh Lord, and this is your kingdom. We adore you as the one who is over all things. Wealth and honor come from you alone, for you rule over everything. Power and might are in your hand and at your discretion. People are made great and given strength. Oh, our God, we thank you and praise your glorious name this day. Thank you, Father, for the privilege to live in the great United States of America and for the freedoms we enjoy, especially to invoke your blessings on our public gatherings as we are today. We pray for all our government leaders, our military servicemen and women, our first responders and all of their families, for their protection, their health, their strength, Lord, their abundant grace and great wisdom to fulfill the duties as they serve, protect, and defend our country. And thank you, Father, that you sent your son, Jesus, into this world to carry the weight of the government on his shoulders, so it does not have to rest on the shoulders of our commissioners here in Paulding County. We ask that you grant them clear vision this day and the days to come with great grace and wisdom that will empower them to accomplish all the needs to be done in Paulding County. Thank you, Father, in the wonderful and matchless name of Jesus. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Shaley. A beautiful prayer to start off our meeting. The February 22nd, 2022 work session minutes and the February 22nd, 2022 board meeting minutes are available for review. In our Team Paulding segment this morning, it's another Employee of the Month. So it's Ms. Brittany Kelly from the probate court. And Jeff, if you want to run that now, it'd be great.
Well, I nominated Brittany Kelly for Employee of the Month because she is always extraordinarily helpful. She is efficient. She's always on time. She's always happy, and she's always willing to help out anybody in the office. Brittany's been with the county for three years, so I've had a lot of time to get to know her, and she's a joy and very pleasant to work with. So she does anything and everything administratively in the office, and she's a perfect candidate for that because she can multitask, she can handle multiple jobs at once without getting flustered or confused or forgetful. So she handles everything now from our calendaring to our courtroom to audiovisual to supplies, employee reviews, anything administrative. And she took a lot of those duties off me and my chief court, Rhonda Bones. I would say to Brittany, thank you very much for being a dedicated employee. Thank you for always being helpful, and thank you for always putting a smile on your face every day.
And that was Judge Altman there that had all the kind words, if you didn't recognize. Woodhough, yeah. Okay, thank you. We have no invited guests this morning. Bid awards, item number two is to approve the construction contract for Mulberry Rock Park Phase Two to the lowest responsible bidder, Magnum Contracting LLC, at the amount This is a SPOST-funded purchase that is located in Post Two. Ms. Pollard and Mr. Justice with Parks and Rec. Ms. Pollard is the finance director or here to talk about it?
Good morning. We received five, six bids. Five of those were within 10% of each other for this park project. And one of the goals of our SPOST program was to get a park in every quadrant of the county. This is Phase Two of Mulberry Rock, and it will add, it will extend the roadway through the remaining portion, the backside, the remaining portion of the park. It will include some storm culverts and roadway storm networks and sidewalks and trail and some site grading, water line installation, erosion and sediment control. Again, we received six bids. Five of those were within 10% of each other, and Croy assisted with these specs. That says a lot for them, because the specs were very clear, and they are recommending award to the low bid, Magnum Contracting, in the amount of $1,675,330.16. Michael Justice is available. We have, unless you have specific questions for him now, 13 and 14 also address this project.
Always this in the timetable?
I'll let Michael talk about the timetable.
We'll be ready to go as soon as, good morning, by the way. I'm sorry. We'll be ready to go as soon as we get the paperwork ready through finance and we get a couple of signatures. As far as the contractors starting, the main point, and we'll go into this in a little bit, when we start talking about the Corps of Engineers and the nationwide permit and stuff like that, we have to be ready to go pretty quickly, in a nutshell. So we'll begin the paperwork. I wouldn't expect Magnum to take long to get out and get started on the project. Just to give you a little background, they're the same group that just finished or are finishing the Taylor Farm project for us, and we've been very pleased with their work to date. So it shouldn't take long. We give them the standard, I think it's 180 days. Is that what we put in there? I don't remember.
I believe so.
Yeah. We'll give them that once they start to get the project completed. Most of this is infrastructure and roadwork and no structures involved, so to speak, so it shouldn't move fairly quickly.
Any other questions? We'll all be running out to Sandy's post to play, right? Bid award number three, it's also Ms. Pollard, Mr. Justice, is to award the purchase of a John Deere 410-11 VACO loader to Flint Equipment Company in the amount of $124,600. So tell us what that's going to be used for.
Okay. The landfill actually operates as a transfer station, and so to, this piece of equipment is used to pack trash. So why is that important that we pack the trash? We have, I pulled the invoices for the hauling, and they're comprised of two different items. One's a hauling fee, and it's 32724 for every load they take out of there, and the other one's a tipping fee. So that's, the more we can get in there, the less hauling fees we have to pay. So we want to make sure we can get as much trash in that truck as we can. Fleet, this particular piece was purchased in 2005. We have two, actually, that operate. We have to have a backup to make sure that we have one operational. So we purchased one in 2005. We purchased another in 2015, and the 2005 has become a maintenance problem for fleet maintenance. And so they have requested that we replace that and move our 2015 to our backup. They requested that we purchase this off the state contract, so it means the states actually bid the equipment. And Flint Equipment Company actually holds the bid for state contract, and the amount of the 410L VACO is $124,600.
Item number four is to approve the low bid provided by Barto Paving in the amount of $80,287 for paving of the Regent's Building parking lot located in Post Four. Ms. Pollard and Mr. Green to fill us in.
Okay. The Regent's Building is currently owned by Paulding County Board of Commissioners, and they lease a portion of it. That lease was renewed in 2021. The fee for that lease ranges from, it increases every year, it's about $80,000, so it goes from 78,909,60 to 88,833,08 in this particular lease. And in that lease agreement, we had agreed to a couple of maintenance items for the facility. One was an ADA compliant ramp in the front, and then ceiling and marking and some parking lot repairs. This is the largest of those parking lot repairs. There'll be maybe a couple of small issues that we'll have to repair in that area. But this one, DOT actually accepted the bids for this one, so if you have any questions concerning the number of bids and that kind of thing, I'm sure they can, either George or Scott can add to those requests.
So did the backup reading have a schedule? Again, the timetable on that? I don't remember it.
They're expected to start very soon because the price of materials is fluctuating, so they would only guarantee this price for a short amount of time.
So we have no requests from, or no reports, excuse me, from committees or departments this morning, and no one who signed up for agenda items. The consent agenda, indulge me while I require to read these for the archives and the record of the meeting. Item number five is to approve the request by the Paulding County Sheriff's Office to retire surplus Major Sheila Creighton's Service Weapon Glock Model 21, serial number TYN992, at the cost of $469. Item number six is to authorize the chairman to enter into an agreement, an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Hiram for asphalt resurfacing on certain municipal roads which are connected to streets being resurfaced on upcoming county resurfaced projects. The city shall reimburse the county for the actual cost incurred for the work set forth, which is estimated at $230,000. Item number seven is to approve the proposed Community Development 2022 Planning and Zoning Division Fee Schedule. Number eight is to approve the acceptance of the streets listed below for perpetual maintenance by the county. It's Montgomery Lane and Montgomery View Court in the Georgian, Post Two. And item number nine is to approve supplemental funding of the Holt Consulting Company Work Authorization Number 22, titled Sanitary Sewer Line Improvements and Existing Sanitary Sewer Line Test Design Phase Services Supplement at the Paulding Northwest Atlanta Airport in the amount of $32,670. So these items are on the consent agenda, and I'd ask if any of the commissioners would like to move them to new business, to regular business. Hearing none, they'll stay on the consent agenda item for this afternoon's vote. So moving right into old business, item number 10 is discuss action to adopt Ordinance 22-01, the zoning ordinance text amendment to adopt a unified development ordinance for Paulding County, Georgia, UDO. The Paulding County Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners to consider a text amendment to the Paulding County zoning ordinance, 2003, as amended. The amendment is in regards to the adoption of the unified development ordinance tabled at the February 22nd, 2022 Board of Commissioners meeting. Ms. Littman and County Attorney, Mr. Jason Phillips, are going to talk to us about it.
Thank you all, and good morning. This was, as you recall, two weeks ago on, I have to do it, February 22nd, 2022, two weeks ago, recommended unanimously by the Planning Commission for adoption. In the past two weeks, I mean, we did encourage the tabling of this so we could get a little more public comment. We have made some tweaks to the ordinance that was approved by the Planning Commission regarding buffers in some of the low-density residential districts, especially R1 and R2. We refined, we have a section that's new in the Planning Commission section. It's a reversion clause, and so we made some tweaks to that. That, in a nutshell, is if you get a rezoning after today and you do not make substantial completion on that within a three-year time period and do not receive an extension, that will revert back to the initial zoning. So we made some tweaks to that. And at this time, as you all know, we are going through an update in partnership with DOT. Community Development is updating our comprehensive plan and comprehensive transportation plan. One of the main goals in this UDO update was to tie every zoning district to an area on the future land use map. And we had kind of an innovative new zoning district that we created called Plan Village, and we allowed that district within a radius of the intersection of 278 and 92, and that was a two-mile radius, and a one-mile radius of the Cedar Crest 92381 intersection. Because we are updating our plans, one of the things in our update is to do five study areas that would be parcel-specific, study areas that would become nodes that would be in our new future development map in our update. Based on that, we would recommend reserving and pulling out the Plan Village District at the current time in order for us to complete that study. Transportation and land use would be a big factor in where you would have a Plan Village, and a Plan Village, we want that to have a built-in market. We want to allow a variety of housing types, single-family, townhouse, even apartments, but with built-in walkable retail, that density might serve as a built-in market. But at this time, we think we'd like to finish the comprehensive plan study and come back and insert this zoning district. Once we finish that, which will, that will be adopted no later than October 31st, and we would love to have as many people, we'd love to have as many nodes. Maybe those aren't the only two nodes where a development like this would be beneficial. So we're going to have five study areas that we're going to be studying in depth, so we would like to hold off on that for now. But this has been a three-year, almost three-year project that we'd like to get adopted so we can move forward. That's the consent agenda item. We needed to add some new zoning districts to the fee schedule, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
And great report, and just can't tell you how excited I am about.
Well, I do, I mean, only because I see what some people, I hear what they say and I see what they say. People send me stuff as far as, you know, like, say, mobile home parks. I mean, so a mobile home park zoning, when people see it, just say they think that we're attracting mobile homes, but that thing's been in our zoning for years, and then people just want to point it out. But just explain how, maybe Jason will hit on, you know, you got to offer certain things, or, I mean, you set yourself up to be sued. You know, I don't think somebody's touched that zoning in 17 years or something like that.
Actually, draw everybody's attention to one of the screens or this map here. This is a copy of the new zoning map showing all the new zoning districts. Mobile Home Park, it is, we had several districts that we simply renamed. Mobile Home Park was R6, and it was called Mobile Home Park. Last August, we eliminated R4 and R7, and quite frankly, the numbers no longer made sense, to have an R1 and an R2 and then skip to R5 and R6. So we decided to rename Mobile Home Park, Mobile Home Park. That is a carryover zoning district that's been in the Paulding County zoning ordinance since 1986. And ironically, we do have some mobile home parks, but they are all zoned R2, I believe, the Mobile Home Park, and I think Chris Robinson is back here somewhere. If you want a little more history on that, he can provide that better than me, but it's simply, it's a name change.
Right. Yeah, I just, yeah, I mean, I saw that more than anything, questions and stuff.
And as a reminder with any, especially any of the new zoning districts, if you look at this map, I always joke when we get people who call and ask, well, it's my property zone. If you guess R2, you have a 75% chance of being right. So anything that's rezoned from R2 to something else will go through a public process. Well, Jason property owners will be notified. They'll have a meeting before the Planning Commission. They'll have a meeting before the Board of Commissioners, and they can give input to county staff, and they can give input at that public meeting. I don't think, we kept that, and Jason, you might want to chime in on why we kept Mobile Home Park. I don't see any change since 1987. We don't actually have any properties on Mobile Home Park, and I really don't see it going forward.
Right. Just like I said, that's one of the things, I mean, among others, I mean, you know, I could go on and on, but I will say that, you know, it's something that's been, you know, I've been working on for a long time, and, you know, not just concentrating on residential and, you know, the stuff we've seen in the past with the smaller lots, all this, you know, the smallest lot, for the most part, is double in size of what it was when PRD was brought in. So I applaud for all the work you have done, but just even on the commercial and industrial and the buffers, and, I mean, it's really moved this county, I feel like, where we've been kind of behind, maybe lagging, looking to the future and see what the future use is and all that, and tying it all together. So thank you.
I think, again, you've adequately addressed the question. And I'd be remiss if I went without saying, Attorney Fred Bentley is here with us in the back of the room today, and Fred, his firm and his staff have been instrumental in helping put this UDO together. Fred's here for another great topic, but we'll defer that to later.
And one of the neat things about this UDO that has been a long time in the making is how organized it is and how easy to use. Do you want to comment on?
Sure. We, everything's, that's why it was important to get a copy of the zoning map, because everything is color-coded. There are tables that if someone wants to look at what the setbacks are in all the residential zoning district, there's a very simple table that you can look at. I'll point out, I've pointed this out before the Planning Commission, we have a new type of use. It's called a special exception. It's something that is not permitted outright, but it is permitted provided you meet a set of criteria, and that criteria will be evaluated by the planning and zoning staff. And in every zoning district, there's, this book has a lot of hyperlinks, so if you see that your use, like, let's take, for instance, a car wash in B2 is a special exception because there's some sewer requirements that are necessary. There's a hyperlink in that section that you click on, and it takes you to that section where you can see what your requirements are. And so that's, I didn't really get to talk too much about our fees because it's on the consent agenda, so I'll take this as an opportunity. At the present time, we are actually not recommending a charge for special exceptions. We'll evaluate that as we move forward to see how many special exceptions that we have. But I also do want to point out, we created two new residential zoning districts, a state residential that requires a two-and-a-half acre minimum lot size, and R1, which requires a one-acre minimum lot size. The minimum fee for this is $450. There's no charge based on the size of property with the other residential and non-residential zoning districts. So that's hopefully an incentive for people to have, especially in the western part of the county where they may want to have larger lots, but the incentive is that it's a very reasonable rezoning fee.
And another thing I think is important is, it wasn't just the community development team that did this. I look around the room here and see the fire department and the head representatives here. All the departments were represented. And again, like Jason said, we had Fred Bentley here to guide us and steer us with his great experience in other counties and municipalities, so.
Economic development helped us out. The school district was invited to participate in some of our conversations. City of Hiram, since we are their planning and zoning department, they participated. DOT, the water system, this has been a group effort, and we will hope to get this first part done. I will make a point that there is no Title III as of right now. We are still using our existing development regulations and standard details, and in the next few months, we will be coming back to you to insert Title III, which is, I like to joke that this book, when it's complete, is the who, what, when, where, how, why, and I've added wow, because hopefully we're going to get a lot of great new developments because of this. Because the who is the Board of Commissioners, the what is the how you develop the property in Paulding County. I think the why is the one I have the hardest time answering. How is the development regulations? Where is the zoning ordinance? And like I said, I've added wow, because I hope that coming soon with, especially some of the new, we have a lot of what I call bridges between your commercial and your industrial zoning district that are very specific to manufacturing and transportation uses that don't include some of the more heavy uses that a traditional light industrial, heavy industrial uses. So I think I'll just end with wow.
Yeah. Well, great report and just a great job. I think, you know, it's taken a while, but anything worth doing, it's worth doing right.
Yes.
Couple of stops and get started again, and those were good judgment calls. Thank you, Scott. Everybody else in the room that had a part in it, it's going to really add to the county. Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business, begin with item number 11, which is the public hearing to receive public comments on Resolution 22-05, requesting amendments to the Paulding County Form of Government. So at this time, I will open the public hearing, but before those that wish to speak come up, I'd like to get our county attorney, Jason Phillips, involved, who wrote the resolution and has really screened and scrubbed this thing for us. So Jason?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And before we begin to receive the public comment for today, I just wanted to take a few minutes and kind of rehash what the, in the big picture, what Resolution 2205 does. It's been, it first appeared about a month ago. It was approved by all on February 8th, and it has since been submitted to the local legislative delegation for their consideration. Because this resolution is a request to change the form of county government, this type of change, in particular, the change where we're moving the executive power, has to go through the local delegation for approval by the General Assembly. But just to rehash, in Paulding County, the governing authority consists of four post commissioners who are elected by district and one chairman who is elected countywide. They alone determine the legislative direction of the county. They're the county-level legislature. It is their duty and obligation to pass ordinances, which are county laws, to set policy for the county, to set its budget, to set its mileage rate for taxation purposes. Those are kind of the overarching duties. There are other duties, but those are the highlights. The chairman is 20% of this legislative body. He has, when the board is fully staffed, he has one vote amongst the five. In addition to having his legislative hat, he is also tasked with being the chief executive officer of the county. None of the other commissioners have executive authority. It solely rests with the chairman. As the chief executive officer, the chairman is responsible for carrying out and enforcing the ordinances and the resolutions passed by the Board of Commissioners, as well as many of the daily tasks that happen with the county government. many of the daily tasks that happen with the county government. The primary effect of Resolution 2205 is to transfer the chief executive officer role, which currently rests in the office of the chairman, to a, to the county manager. So, the county manager would become the chief executive officer. The county manager, as you're well aware and under this resolution, is appointed by a majority vote of the five commissioners. The concept of placing executive duties in a full-time county manager is designed to orchestrate and empower a professional CEO, either on experience or education or combination of both, to run the county business on a full-time basis every day, much similar to a large corporation. Counties that have a point, that have a CEO-appointed county manager or county administrator, and as I mentioned last month, don't get those terms confused. The question for this board and for the delegation is where is the executive power going to rest, either in what you call a county manager or a county administrator? But other jurisdictions which have vested executive authority in the county manager or county administrator are Cherokee County, Forsyth County, Fayette County, Coweta County, Floyd County, Hall County, and Cobb County. That's an example of several. That's not the exhaustive list. But I just wanted to let the public know that this is a model that has been implemented in other jurisdictions and worked successfully, better in some than in others. But based on our review, that is the, the board's recommendation here. But today is an opportunity for additional public input. And in regard to that input, the Board of Commissioners received several emails from members of the Paulding County community. And I want to repeat, or I want to recite basically the, the essence of one of those emails on this executive authority issue. The emails say, and, and many emails were received, they were all very similar, but this was the essence of, of the primary concern as I saw it. Resolution 2205, quote, "Gives a staggering level of control to an unelected bureaucrat who would be accountable only to the board members, not the public. That sets up for avoiding responsibility by duly-elected officials." And the email kind of categorized that concern in the following statement, that the commissioners could say, "The county manager decided that, not us." That was the concern expressed in these emails. I would agree with the email in that it places considerable executive authority into an appointed official, that county manager. However, under 2205, responsibility and accountability remain squarely within the duly-elected Board of Commissioners. They have the authority to hire the most qualified candidate for the job. In addition to the authority to hire, they have the authority to terminate the county manager at any time, 365 days a year. The county, county manager position would be what we term in the legal world as an "at-will" employee. An at-will employee is not protected by the county's civil service system. The majority of county employees are civil service employees, which means they can only be terminated for cause. The department heads and various others, including this county manager, would be an "at-will" employee. Under the Georgia case law, an at-will employee is defined, the relationship is defined as follows. The employer, which in this case would be the Board of Commissioners, the employer with or without cause, regardless of motives, may discharge the county manager without liability. That is the nature of an at-will employee. So, for example, if your county manager, as the CEO, asserts too much control over department operations, fails to include agenda items on this agenda that had been requested by the various commissioners, engages in frivolous or irresponsible spending, terminates employees contrary to the wishes of a majority of the Board of Commissioners, recommends a financially irresponsible budget, or just generally engages in conduct that is unbecoming of how an executive is expected to operate the county, in that case, the Board of Commissioners could terminate that county manager at any time and hire a new county manager who understands the expectations of the elected Board of Commissioners. When a CEO-county manager makes a decision, their decision-making is going to be driven by what do these five elected officials want? Or, in reality, what do at least three of them want? Because three comprises a majority. On the flip side, if the chief executive officer remains in the chairman's position, and I'm not suggesting that this has occurred, but in the event it does, if the chairman abuses or mismanages executive power, there is no changing out the chair. Voters will have a single opportunity, once every four years, to change out the chairperson and elect a new chairperson who hopefully will not abuse such executive power. There is another option. When a chairman or any post-commissioner is in office, there is a vehicle called a recall petition where the voters can recall a sitting elected official. The challenge with that, however, is that you have to acquire signatures of 35% of the registered voters within a 45-day period. And the math on that is 43,750 signatures. So, as you can see, that's, that's quite a high task. So, the bottom line in 2205, and there are other provisions in it, but these are the highlight, is the highlight. The bottom line of Resolution 2205, it gives the full Board of Commissioners full control over the manner in which executive power is exercised, through its complete control over who it selects as the county manager, and if necessary, when they, when and if they terminate that county manager if they've abused that executive authority. So, with that opening remark, Mr. Chairman, I would defer to you. I know we have the list and it might be easier to just call the names on the list. And when you get to the last name, ask if there are any others who have not signed up who wish to speak.
Thank you very much, Mr. Phillips. And that's exactly what I'll do. There's no requirement for any order. But the first person on the list is Mr. Wayne McCauley. And so, Mr. McCauley, if you want to come forward at this time and share with us. Appreciate you being here.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
If I understand this right, part of your job is being transferred to someone else, correct?
You just address your thoughts to me.
Okay.
Later on, we'll see if any...
I do know that we have an elected board here that is to run this county. Being born and raised in this county, we've never had a county manager and the county's run fine. Why all of a sudden do we need a county manager that's going to get taxpayer money that these boys standing right back here in the corner could use to make us a lot safer than what we are in this county? You're losing part of your responsibility to run the county, drawing all your pay and we're paying extra man. And I, as a resident of this county and a taxpayer of this county, I don't feel that's right. That's why we have the elections, to elect the people to run this county. So, why, I mean, we've never had the county manager? Why do we need it now? It's worked fine for, I'm 70 years old now, so it's worked fine for that 70 years without having a county manager. And that money that that county manager could make, or would make, or will make, whatever the amount, I don't know what the amount is, could go to our fire department and our county sheriff's department to get equipment they need to keep us safe from crime and fires and leave it just like it is because it's been working good all these years. Why change it? That's all I want to know, is why change it? Why, if it's not broke, don't fix it, is what I'm saying. And Brian ought to understand that with all the equipment he runs, if it ain't broke, you don't tear it down and work on it, do you, Brian? But that, that's all I've got to say. That's my question. Why do we need them? The county's worked fine all these years. I say, turn this down. Don't do it. Give that money that would pay that salary to these people back here. Those are the people that we need, that need money, not some just a little 2.8% raise every three or four years. They need tons of money to keep this county safe from crime and fire. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tully?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, lady and gentleman of the commission. Mr. Baker, Mr. Phillips, thank you for the opportunity. I assume that the emails you spoke about are probably some of these I have here. I have 73. I would gladly pass into your hands. Thank you for the comprehensive explanation of 2205. I'm glad it's taking place. I wished it had taken place 30 days ago. I'm here today to ask, are we utilizing our current structure to its ability? We have an administrator. Is he being used to his fullest potential in that position? Not Mr. Baker, that position. Does it actually require the elevation to a county manager or a CEO? There was mention of some counties that are using that system, and there are some people in this room that fled those counties because of that system. We are Paulding County. There is no doubt that our growth is extensive and the future view is large. The who in this room is the citizen. We are the ones that inevitably feel your decisions and require to be included in those decisions to some extent. There are things, I talked about those last month, there are things that the Board of Commissioners do that are part of your day-to-day commission duties. Changes to the form of county government are larger than that. They will, in effect, affect every, every life in this county. As a citizen, it is my goal and desire to make sure that the monies that we have in this county are, we are fiscally responsible to those things, that services in this county are well-funded, the citizens are representative, represented by our commission. I am only interested in accountability, transparency, and the inclusion of our citizens. And with that, I'll leave it to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Virginia Galloway, we thank you for being here. Good morning.
Thank you for giving this opportunity for citizens to speak. That was really important to me when I spoke last time. I will say that my opinion has not really changed, but my main purpose here is to say thank you to each one of you for giving all of us a chance to be respected and allowed to voice an opinion on something that affects our county and affects our lives in the coming years and even decades possibly. So, that's pretty much it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Virginia. Embedding cleanup is Mr. Deb Receber. That means your fourth.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much. I just have two quick questions, and I guess this is not a question-and-answer time, but with regards to this new position, I would imagine there is going to be a list of qualifications. And are the public going to be able to see those, that list of qualifications, or is it just something that you guys are going to create as to this position, what type of qualifications this individual needs? Secondly, is, does this individual, are they going to be required to be a Paulding County resident? Because I see everyone sitting back here, and although you all know me, I was not born here in Paulding County, but they have such a passion, and that's one of the things I like so much about, you know, most of y'all, especially Brian, and, you know, when you have, when you've been born and raised in this county, there's a passion for this county. And just wondering if that position would, would require that. Thank you.
Ms. Beverly Cochran, thank you for being here, Beverly. Good morning.
I was present at the February 8th meeting and submitted an email to Sandy ahead of time with my feelings, even though I didn't speak. The people that did speak spoke on behalf of asking either to delay the vote or to hold a public hearing. And so, I failed to let my voice be heard. So, today, I'm here, rather than letting someone steal my voice, to share it with you, that I haven't changed my opinion on this. I'm still opposed, but I appreciate very much the opportunity that you have opened up to allow the citizens to speak. I wrote down some things, but after being here, a couple of things that I thought about is that, you know, it takes all of us out here and our property tax and our sales tax to fund the operations of the county. So, it is very important that you get to hear what it is that we think. And with my experience of working with the county, I think that the county administrator form, it's not a form of government, but it's a division of the government, works very well. And that I don't understand at this point in time with Chairman Carmichael's second term in office, why at this point in time, this has become so urgent for us to do this. And I do know that if you do change it to a county manager form of government, because of the transfer of the powers, that generally, the chairman's salary is cut. That was never addressed. But I do know that in quite a few of the counties that has that form of government, that your chairman becomes part-time. So, that's something I just wanted to throw out to you this morning. And I would respectfully ask that you reverse your vote and hold off on this until at least a time just before the next election to allow Chairman Carmichael to fulfill his duties as chairman and CEO of the county, or to just reverse them, period. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Cochran. And Ms. Kathy Helms, thank you for being here, Kathy.
Good morning. I'm nursing my annual allergies, so bear with me. I'm, I'm really not clear why this resolution was even created. Everything that you're asking to be done can already be done with the form of government we have. we have with the county administrator. As the chairman, you can assign him to do many of those things that you're wanting to change our whole form of government to do. It can stay exactly the same. You don't have to change a thing, and you can still transfer those powers. And I'm also not clear why this has been so rushed. And I want to say, there may be some question regarding the validity of the vote to approve this resolution. That should be resolved first before anything else happens. And how about we take a cue from our sheriff when he wanted a new jail? I heard him stand up here for years saying, "We need a new jail, we need a new jail." Finally, he asked you to put it on the ballot. It passed overwhelmingly by the citizens. Why don't we put this on the ballot in November and see what the community wants? Doing so will remove any dissension surrounding this change to our government. I will be asking the legislative delegation to do the same thing. Involving citizens in this process results in a positive outcome for everyone. Citizen participation is an essential part of open governance. And to quote Patrick Henry, "The liberties of a people never were, never ever will be secure when the transactions of their rulers may be concealed from them." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Helms. Are there any other, hold on just a second. Are there any other citizens that would like to participate in this public hearing? Do you have a sheet up there, Rebecca?
You do, I'll do all that later. I'll just try to get done this stuff. I'm here for the same purpose that everyone else has been here.
We know you, but why don't you refresh those who may not know?
Okay, I am Carol McLeod, and I live in Paulding County, and I moved here in the nineties, early nineties, when everything was exploding. I understand the manager position very well. I've researched it. I know there was a couple of comments made that, you know, that we've never had a manager system, but I think we did back in the early nineties. I'm pretty sure we did. And then there was a meeting held on April the eleventh, two thousand and seventeen, when the last board asked for a motion to adopt the job description for county operations manager and approve the human resources to begin the hiring process. So it was brought up before as a manager position, and at the time, it seemed like that was the way to go then as well as it is now. I am for it. I praise you for coming up. I know that was a hard decision to have to come to, but with the growth and with what's going on in our county and being one of the fastest-growing counties in the state of Georgia, I think it is needed. I think any operation as large as this one, years ago, maybe it didn't need to be a manager position, but now I think we do. I think it's a very good idea that the person that's making the personnel decisions and helping to make those decisions is held, working with you with those decisions, and it's in my understanding that you still will have the final say-so, and I think that's one of the big concerns. I've heard some of the people speak about that and talk to me about it, but after I explained it better to them, they had a better understanding. So I think there's a good many people in the county that aren't here today that are very, very much like the idea as well. I thank you for what you do every day. I know it's hard, and you never know what the job is until you walk in a man or woman's job, and you're a part of that skin that's underneath there. So I know that there are things that we don't know because you can't discuss those with us. That's part of your jobs until the decisions are made, and I just appreciate what you do. It's a hard job, and I thank you, and thank you for letting me speak again. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. McLeod, very much. Any other citizens that would like to come forward and speak? Just sign up, please, and we know who you are, but tell us again.
I wasn't going to speak, but just want to clarify something, too. Back in the nineties, when Commissioner Carruth did, when he turned his power over, he turned it over to his administrator. When Commissioner Sharon got in there, then he took his power back. So you can do what you're talking about doing now. That's one of the main things that's going on. If that's not true, I know Jason and the farm's been here forever, and they can kind of verify that, but I know that that can be done and can be changed back and forth where you're at right now. Another thing to me, just sitting here listening, when you put it in the hands of a bureaucrat, basically what we're doing, we're putting another level between the citizens and their government. The citizens already feel disenfranchised with most governments out there anyway. I'm not just talking about Paulding County, but all governments. And so to put another layer between the citizens and their government, I just feel like you're going to cause even more disenfranchisement with most citizens out here. That's all I wanted to say, and thank you guys again for doing this. One other thing I was going to say, just, one of the questions that was asked by several other legislators to us was, since the chairman basically is going to be kind of a part-time job, too, will his salary be reduced? That is something that they really want to know. So I think that's something I'll need to address to let them know what's going on, too, because they do think, they do see now that, well, you're taking the CEO, the chairman's being paid to be the CEO, and when the CEO is being turned over to a manager, will the chairman's salary be reduced? Because if not, you're paying too high salaries for doing basically the same job. Thank you.
Just sign in, please, and tell us who you are. We know, but tell us anyway.
Good morning, all. My name is Lydia Rollins, and I am here to speak in favor of what you are proposing. I'm going to present an analogy, if you want to call it that. I worked for a huge corporation, I won't say who, but I was their operations manager. It was a wholesale building products distributor. We had over fifty million dollars in sales yearly, and I was, as I said, the operations manager in charge of forty thousand line items of materials that we carried in the warehouse. I, obviously alone, could not do all of that going out there, checking everything. I had people underneath me that I assigned to the various products so that they could, on a daily, weekly basis, tell me where we were so we could make sure that we had enough product in the warehouse to sell. This analogy I'm using is because you yourself, Mr. Chairman, have a lot on your plate. So you obviously, you know, if you want to help our county grow, continue to grow in a proper manner, you need people underneath you that you can entrust to do the everyday tasks, so you can do the bigger tasks. And this is what I am interpreting you folks are proposing now, and I wholly support it. We need you, the head of Paulding County, out there, bringing in the big businesses, making sure that our county grows in a proper manner. And therefore, in order to do that, to free up your time to do that, you need someone that the board as a whole can entrust the daily, I don't want to say mundane, but the daily tasks that will free you up to do what we elected you to do, and the whole board. That's what I have to say. Thank you. Appreciate everything everyone is doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. Any other comments, citizens wishing to speak? Going, going, gone. So, first of all, before I close out the public hearing, thank you so much for being willing to come up and speak your thoughts in your mind. Served in the military for quite a long time, and that's one of the reasons that we did it, wasn't it, Wayne? Where's Wayne? Is he still here? So it's very important to me and to the commissioners that we hear from you. To me, that's the most gratifying part of the job, is to hear from you. We would have had a public hearing before if it were required, and requirement means by enabling legislation, but I can see some people that I heard from that, you know, use require as, well, it's a good thing because you need to hear from the people. As soon as that got in my brain housing group, it was like, yeah, we're going to do that. So again, I thank you for being here and being willing to speak. At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing, but ask if there are people here on the panel that would like to address anything that was said or clarify anything that was said.
Mr. Chairman, I just addressed three legal issues that were raised by the various speakers. One, historically in Paulding County, Chairman Carruth, I believe in nineteen ninety-nine, created the position, I don't want to bore you with too many legal details, but under state law, a county can create a county manager. In nineteen ninety-nine, Paulding County, by resolution, created the position of county manager. In the same resolution, it was decided that we would not call that person a county manager, we would call that person a county administrator. To date, that position currently occupied by Mr. Baker has remained titled county administrator. However, the interesting thing is that while the statute creates that, in Paulding County, you cannot simply shift the executive authority, which is vested in the chairman, over to the county administrator or county manager by a county ordinance or by a county resolution. A couple of speakers alluded to it might be possible. Just wanted you all to know that we looked at that authority, and under the Georgia Supreme Court case of Gray versus Dixon from nineteen eighty-two, they determined that any attempt by that to transfer executive authority vested in the chairman to a county manager would be unconstitutional. That would take an act of the General Assembly, and that is why twenty-two oh five seeks the change from the General Assembly. Another legal point I wanted to address, the question was raised about, could the county require the county manager to be a resident of Paulding County? There is a state statute that prohibits a county from requiring any of its employees from residing in the county. The same holds true for municipalities, so just know state law would prohibit that regardless of the policy behind, whether that's a good or a bad idea, it's just prohibited. Thank you.
Any of the commissioners have comments that were stimulator or came up as our speakers were sharing their ideas?
Well, obviously, we did listen, and we postponed the, and had a, can you hear me now better? Okay. So having this public meeting, I hope, does help dilute some of the feelings and stuff like that, and we have done a lot of thinking and processing this and looked at it through as a businessman's eyes, is the only way I know how to look at it. And a lot of, most businesses by far this size runs this way. By far, business wouldn't do it if it didn't run well. School board, three times the size of us, runs this way, along with actually more like a strong manager position, like a strong city manager position, where it really changes the way that the employees interact with the commissioners or the city councilmen and stuff like that. So we've looked at it, and it is, and really, I think of it as being, I think Ms. Helm said something, and it made me think about being transparent. Well, this really is, if we could transfer this power without anybody saying, then we would just do it, like I said Bill Carruth did, right? But if we're putting it out there and changing the way of orders, being transparent on how we want to operate, besides just delegating the power without any of y'all's input. So it just popped up in my head when she was speaking about why we just don't transfer power, and it was just, it's really about being transparent and putting it out there for the citizens to know how we operate, want to operate.
Thank you, Brian. I was taking notes. With Mr. McCauley, responsibilities was one of his concerns, transferred to someone else. Well, a couple of things. The county administrator had nothing to do with this, absolutely nothing to this. This was five commissioners that were interested in evaluating and comparing to other counties. As Ms. McLeod said, on February eighth, seventy-one counties in Georgia out of a hundred and fifty-nine have a county manager. So, yeah, Frank and I were talking this morning, it's like, everything's going to be about the same, other than a couple of things I'll mention in just a moment. There's no additional taxpayer money, there's no salary increase for the county manager, who will be Mr. Baker. It's his same salary. Nod your head up and down, Tara. All right. There was kind of a question of, are we using the current position effectively, I guess? I'll touch on that here in just a second. Ms. Galloway just talked about the main purpose. What this board does is try to find ways to be more effective and efficient in how we operate, and there's some of the previous board members in the room that helped bring Scott Green to the position of Director of Operations. Tremendous, tremendous advantage for the county in doing that. Qualifications, wow. You know, you can have people run for elections that have very unusual qualifications. I don't know that flying a military airplane or an Eastern Airlines airplane or managing the state's flight operation had a whole lot to do with all the engineering and all the challenges that go on around here. I reread last night the resolution itself, and it was produced from facts, and some of them have already been mentioned. The main reason that counties have county managers is because they get larger. In, at the census in the year two thousand, the county had eighty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight people, and today we have just under a hundred and seventy thousand people. The, so it's doubled the number of people. The budget was forty-four million dollars, and today it's a hundred and ninety-one million dollars. So a lot of people have said, you know, why do you need to do it? It's been working great. Well, we're not the same county we were twenty years ago or even ten years ago. We've quadrupled in budget. The UCGA, Uniform Code of Georgia Annotated, Title Thirty-Six, Section Five, Paragraph Twenty-Two, is what Jason alluded to, is that it says, "The counties may create the Office of County Manager to carry out the functions," or, let me get that in a second. So Paulding County in nineteen ninety-nine, under Commissioner Carruth, Resolution Twenty-Three, through the statutory guidance, through the state's guidance, titled the county manager position, a county administrator, to carry out more of the functions that were of an administrative nature. to carry out more of the functions that were of an administrative nature. Having the county manager as a CEO is due to this. It's because of the intense daily operating, operational demands that we have need of someone who's tremendously experienced and educated. And, you know, it's impossible to come into the chairman's job and be immediately an effective chief executive. It's impossible. And I don't think any of the citizens should want that if, and the county manager doesn't get elected. So that he or she can stay in that position with all their experience and working with all the departments and be effective immediately, they don't have to leave. So I think that's one of the biggest arguments in favor of having a county manager. Most of our department heads in the room have worked 10, 15 years with the county. That experience is irreplaceable. Whereas if you hired just some fictional person that gets elected, I think you've diminished your chances of really strong success as a county. So when I roll off, are you going to be able to put somebody right in this seat that's all ready to go? Maybe they're, they've been a doctor, or maybe they've had a landscaping business, you know? They wouldn't be nearly as capable as Mr. Baker if he were to stay that long. So we're a big county now. We're a large county government. It's different. It needs to be run effectively and professionally. We as a board of five members on February the 8th in the afternoon session voted 5-0 to make this change. It's a transmission, a transition from an administrative focus to a executive focus. And it frees up the chairman in the future, whoever it is. It frees them up to work with Mayor Kelly, to work with Mayor Moran, to work with our state delegates. There was an event last night with the state delegates, a bill that they're looking to change. This time of year when they're in session, it's extremely important to be in contact with them on a regular basis. The ACCG, Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, I've been the revenue finance chairman for that committee, there are nine different committees, for about a year now. And I can have more effect in working with the policymakers at ACCG than most of the so-called executive jobs in Paulding County. So, you know, being able to get out to the Northwest Georgia Regional Council and work with the whole region in the 15 counties of that region, you just don't have time to do it if you're doing the everyday. I've talked to Brian about running his business. He was freed up to be a much more successful businessman after he decided, hey, I need to assign Joe or whoever it was and trust them to get the things done. And some people have mentioned this is more like a business, run like a business. And I agree. When you're willing to turn over to your department heads the authority and trust them for their expertise, it's a lot more effective county government. And it really surprises me that more people in this room don't realize that. The only motivation we have is for the county to be better and to be more effective. The Board of Education, they, Mr. Erickson sits right where Scott is right now, and he's here for every planning commission meeting, and that's something that we as a board initiated. Get the school system in here when we're talking about applications for more homes or for whatever. So the relationship with the Board of Education is huge. The Chamber of Commerce, the relation with them is important. The Economic Development Organization, fortunately, we have two of the commissioners that are on that, and Brian's been the chair. But, you know, I talk to Michael Hughes, who's the executive director there, almost every day. How are other counties doing it? You know, that's, I need to be on the phone with Steve Taylor in Bartow County and the other counties and say, how are you working on this problem that you have in your county? I need to be doing things like that. So the other thing, maybe most important of all, is the citizens. The people on this panel do and will continue to speak with any and all of you whenever you're available to speak. I don't, have you ever turned down anybody that's asked to speak to you? And the best idea for county government that may be sitting in this room, I would be a terrible leader to not want to listen to the ideas that you have, and the same with all of us. So let me just say in my comments, the best idea for Paulding County in any of the issues we deal with may be sitting right here in this room. That's what I believe in my heart. It's not just something I'm trying to say to look good. Any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So I did close out the public hearing, and then we started with other comments, so I'm good, right?
Yes, sir. Item 12.
Item number 12 is to the action to adopt ordinance 22-02, an ordinance to make findings of fact based on evidence of adverse secondary effects of adult use and sexually oriented businesses in reports and cases made available to the county. That's to provide for updated regulations of sexually oriented businesses for the light industrial and heavy industrial zoning districts within the county limits. To provide a new section to Chapter 46, Article 7, entitled obscenity and other offenses. Ms. Littman is going to address this along with our special guest, Mr. Fred Bentley of Bentley &amp; Bentley.
I will keep my part short and sweet. This is part of the changes to our unified development ordinance. This was previously under a category entitled adult entertainment establishments, and we are recommending it be changed to sexually oriented businesses. And with that, I'm going to introduce Fred Bentley with the Bentley Law Firm in Marietta, who has been assisting us with this and is here to speak on this. And I believe Chief Hess with the Marshal Bureau also has some commentary.
And how many other counties and municipalities have you worked with to get them through this?
More than I care to remember. You know, certainly y'all have been debating the serious issues of the day, and let me just say this on behalf of the staff that I had the pleasure of working with over the last few years, even through COVID, through the use of technology, I just, y'all have got it right here. And y'all work extremely hard. And let me just say to this audience, every single one of these folks spent time in the room working on these ordinances. And that is an amazing situation because that's not always the case. I've been in an instance with a tree ordinance many, many years ago where I was, the whole council got up and left and went outside while I read for about two and a half hours because in that particular jurisdiction, you had to read every word of every ordinance. This morning, I am especially thankful that I do not have to read to you about sexually oriented businesses. So I am certainly glad to be here. There is, there are certain protocols that you have to do in connection with that. The First Amendment and whether I agree with the Supreme Court of the United States of how they have taken the First Amendment and expanded the freedom of expression, it matters not. They have provided guidance through the years, and they allow you as a community to address time, place, and manner for what you had before called adult entertainment. Over time, these ordinances, your ordinance was passed in 1986, which was, we went through that in Cobb County, and my guess is rip off and duplicate is probably the order of the day in a lot of these folks. I'm not suggesting that their law firm did that, but that there were a rash of these that were put in place. All I can tell you is that the folks that promulgate these types of things have become quite inventive through the court systems, and it is necessary for you to go through very, very specific findings of fact and conclusions of law to make sure that your ordinance deals exclusively with time, place, and manner in a limited manner so that you allow the expression of adult, and you just fill in the blank, or sexually oriented businesses, and limit those things that are not protected. In addition, you have to write ordinances that are content neutral. And so each of you were provided with a series of studies, and I brought them here. I know y'all got thumb drives, so I had to kill a tree. And I will be tendering that to the clerk as part of the official administrative record. I know each of you were given those, and I'm sure you are probably bleary eyed after reading those. I would certainly commend to you, you've looked at a number of the things in Sandy Springs. I will tell you, there is a copy of the Sandy Springs meeting that occurred where we sent three individual, four individuals undercover into the clubs in that part of the world. And it will curial toes in terms of the evidence that came forth, in terms of the adverse secondary effects. And you can, as a part of your public duty, control the adverse secondary effects. One of those ways is to remove alcohol from establishments. And I've got Trevor Hess, who will be here, who's worked undercover, and we'll talk to you a little bit about that. But I, in that material, you've got all the, what I'll call the case law that addresses this issue over time, dating back to the City of Renton versus Playtime Theaters, City of Los Angeles versus Almeida Books. You've got a long litany in terms of a purpose clause that we are commending to you, that we ask that you adopt. And make that as a part of your finding. As a part of it as well, it includes an obscenity, what I'll call a mini obscenity ordinance, which the state of Georgia, it was declared unconstitutional in a case called this, that, and the other, which is in Cobb County. The judge indicated, here's what you need to do to fix it, and the Georgia legislature determined that they were not going to fix it. So right now, we do not have an obscenity ordinance in the state legislature. And that was with them saying, we're just not going to touch that. So most of the jurisdictions around you have passed what I will call a mini obscenity ordinance that fixes the one problem as it relates to that, as it relates to that ordinance, and that is included in this material as well. So that is part of your ordinance. So with that, let me call up Mr. Hess, who has served with distinction as your marshal, your chief marshal, and have him come offer you some testimony for you to consider as well, and then I'll be glad to answer any questions that I can. I don't know that I can shed much on the issue of sexually oriented businesses, but I will certainly attempt. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Fred. I do want to thank Fred, too. He did a great job with this. Ms. Littman, she was part of helping all this and her staff. Like Fred said, this has been, this has been a long time coming because this ordinance has not been updated since 97. And I've heard today a lot of talk about growth in the county and how the county has just skyrocketed from that particular time. If we don't, if we don't get a hold of this, we could get bit. So I think that this is very important to discuss, although some people don't want to discuss this all the time. And like Fred said, when I was with our good sheriff, I was lucky enough to somehow be thrown into the mix of working some undercover and dealing with some of these adverse secondary effects. Although we don't have them here because we don't have any of these establishments, we don't want to get those. So essentially, as Fred alluded to, there's a lot of studies, a lot of case law that are able to show the secondary effects that are included with these particular establishments. They are to include but not limited to property crime, prostitution, drug use, sexual assaults, and exploitation, and urban blight. It even is to get pushed as far as having armed robbery of patrons that frequent these It also has shown that the majority of patrons that frequent these establishments are from outside of the county, which then brings crime in from outside of the county. So we have to protect ourselves from that. They've also shown that the best way to regulate these businesses while not restricting or denying their First Amendment rights, as Fred has alluded to, is by zoning and alcohol regulations. This new ordinance, if adopted, will provide the county with the ability to better regulate these businesses and mitigate those secondary effects that would harm the welfare and the safety of the public, of our good citizens. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Fred.
Thank you, Chief Hess.
Are there any questions for the chief as it relates to his testimony?
I don't know the answer to this, Fred, but light, industrial, those locations, those zone locations, there must be some background on that.
Many jurisdictions choose to go to those locations. They, quite frankly, don't want them in the downtown areas or areas where you have a lot of homes or a lot of other things. So that's, you know, it's kind of a choice of a venue, and it seemed like it was probably the view that that was probably the better place. You do have to provide opportunities for the forum. It is extremely difficult in situations in counties such as this. The appellate courts have even given some renderings of like one establishment per 9,000 citizens is the only case that I'm aware of that actually went to look at the number of people and saying, well, this is what we think is appropriate, which is questionable at best. I'm not sure how they arrived at that number, but they determined that that was constitutional. So I think the answer is, it was felt like that there would not be as much damage in terms of property damage and other things occurring in that particular location. And we had your staff, Chris Robinson actually went and developed a map, so you do have the adequate number of locations that could be filled out, which is an important part of making your ordinance constitutional as well. And of course, here's the problem, if you don't have an ordinance or it's declared unconstitutional, you open the door and they can just about open anywhere. As Mr. Phillips will attest.
I would say that those litigate on behalf of adult entertainment establishments are experts at what they do, and they are experts at reviewing local jurisdictions' ordinances and finding loopholes to jump through. So that's why an exercise like this is important to make sure that the ordinances that we have in place best reflect policies and opinions of the citizens and its Board of Commissioners while at the same time honoring those rights that are protected under the Constitution.
If you want to get an absolute clear picture, look at the testimony in the depositions that occurred in the Sandy Springs. That litigation went on for 10 years. So if you want to get an idea of how insistent they are, that's what you're looking at if you don't have something that's proper and in place. But there's the testimony of August 16th, 2012, is a deposition that I attended that I was involved with. We went, took expert opinions because you recall, Fulton County lost that case before. And they spent- And they spent years trying to put something back in place to protect the citizens there. And that is the deposition testimony of Tamara Lynn Corozala. And she described herself as the madam of flashers. And I will leave everything that you want to read into that. It is, it was evil, the different things that were occurring that she openly admitted to, that were right on her noses. The drug abuse, the alcohol abuse, the prostitution, the other things that you want to protect your citizens from.
Let's take this opportunity to thank you for getting this lined up correctly here. We don't need any lawsuits out here.
I want to say thank you, Mr. Bentley, for helping us with this project. It was a long project, but I learned a lot. And we met every Thursday for almost three years. And this is very well-written. And I thank everybody that worked on it for that.
Well, you got a great team.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley and Chief Hess. Item number 13 is to discuss action to approve the purchase of stream mitigation credits from Dawsonville Bluffs LLC in the amount of $427,310 for the Mulberry Rock Park Phase II project. This is a SPOLOST-funded purchase in post II. And Mr. Michael Justice to report.
I'm going to take a minute to gather my thoughts after that one. I'm sorry. And thank you for placing me behind that one. Earlier today, you read the bid award for the Phase II construction project at Mulberry Rock. These next two items, excuse me, are a part of that project. In a nutshell, what's going to happen with Phase II is a connection between the front of the park and the back of the park with a loop road. We are always taught to plan ahead. So in thinking of Phase III, which may involve a large water feature in the center of that park, then we have to go the route that we are going today. Part of that does involve going through some or impacting some streams and some wetlands there. As part of that, in the Corps of Engineers and the nationwide permit, then we are required to buy mitigation credits to, to address those disturbed areas. This is where that is. And before I go any further, I'd like to thank Mr. Scott McDally with Croy Engineering for, for helping us get to where we are on that project. It's been a great help and a valuable resource for us. And I thank him for coming, and he can help me when I stumble a little bit today. So this first one, excuse me, that involves the, the stream mitigation credits, the price is a lot lower. You have to go, you have to search and find mitigation banks. And they're not always where you want them to be, and the prices change from day to day, if not minute by minute. And we've had to lock in these prices as where they are now. With those, the stream mitigation credits, they're less expensive. They're only $95 per credit, but we only have to buy 4,498 of them. So that's where the number of the 427,310 comes in. So it is a part of the approval process through the Corps of Engineers. It's mandated that we do it. And this is the first one with the streams. Be happy to try to answer any questions that, that you might have on the stream side.
Is it okay to ask a dumb question?
If you want a dumb answer. Scott will be here to help me if I can't get through it, but please, please do.
So I didn't think you had to get mitigation for something if you weren't going to cover a stream up or something?
It's, it's going to cost us more when we cover it up than it is to go through it with the road when we get there. It's, it's just a, it's a Corps of Engineer thing. And I know that you guys are very familiar with dealing with the Corps, with the building of the reservoir and that sort of thing. What they do is when you go through something like this, then they go back and they restore and they recreate in other areas. And this is the funding vehicle that they use to do it. It would make sense that if you were going to add more of what you were going through, then you wouldn't have to do that. But that's not the way that it works, unfortunately.
Any other questions?
Is that a pretty good answer for Scott?
Okay.
All right, let's move on to the next one. It's with Mr. Justice also. It's discuss action to approve the purchase of wetland credits from RES Aster LLC in the amount of $180,000 for Mulberry Rock Park Phase II project. It's also SPOLOST-funded, of course, the same location.
Yes, sir, and the same explanations for this one as well. Instead of streams, this one deals with wetlands. We only have to buy two wetland credits. But where the other, the stream mitigation credit was low per credit, this one's higher. This one's two credits at $90,000 apiece. So that's where the number comes from that. Same explanations as before with the Corps and the nationwide permit being responsible for those costs.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate it.
Sure, thank you.
And good to have you with us from Croy. Thank you. Also, good to have Alex with us.
Hopefully, then when we get to that next one, since that lumber's, I mean, that number's going to be much bigger. That may be in my successor's tenure. So he'll get to ask you for that, that big number instead of myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I do 15 and 16 together? Okay, I'm going to do items 15 and 16 to wrap up here. Discuss action to adopt Resolution 22-09, providing for the levy and collection of an annual ad valorem tax to provide funds for the payment of the principal of premium, if any, in interest on the Pauling County School District General Obligation Refunding Bond. This is a Series 2025 bond in the original principal amount of $58,720. Thank you. Principal amount of $58,720,000. Ms. Pollard and County Attorney, Mr. Jason Phillips.
Good morning. This is one of those things, fortunate things you get to do because you're the tax levying authority. So the school board has found an advance refunding opportunity that they have approved at a meeting, and they have sent it now to you to approve so that they can refinance the 2014 bond issue. If you remember, a few years ago, I know the last two, this current one and the one before, they're ELOS, they're, they're using their ELOS to pay the debt. So there actually hasn't been a millage rate. But because the bonds are backed with a tax levy, it requires your approval. So what the school board is requesting to do is to refinance the 2014 bonds, which refinanced the 2007 and 2008. This is not, does not provide new money. It's just completely an interest savings for, an interest savings for their opportunity to save some money on the 2026 through 2023 financings. So, and in looking at, back at 2014, their interest rates for that time period was 3.75% to 5%. And in 2020, well, let me back up a little bit. So this requires, this is the same money. Both resolutions are the same money. But due to some tax law changes, you can't advance refund a tax-exempt bond. So they're having to convert the tax-exempt piece to a taxable piece to 2025. And then it becomes eligible for tax exempt. So the savings that they're going to see were the original was 3.75% to 5%. And then this at 2022 will convert to 2.28%. And then the second resolution in 2025 will allow them to go back to a tax exempt, and they will pay 1.79%. So it's just continuously decreasing the rate. That's a lot to say. I'm not sure if I was clear. So if I missed anything, let me know.
And for the record, I'll read 16. Discuss action to adopt Resolution 22-10, providing for the levy and collection of annual ad valorem tax to provide funds for the payment of the principal of premium, if any, in interest on the Pauling County School District taxable general obligation refunding bond Series 2022 in the original principal amount of $60,625,000. So I guess that's all, just a duplication, it's a different bond?
It's just a different bond. So the $60,625 is the Series 2022. And then in 2025, those will be converted back to a tax exempt in the amount of $58,720,000.
Do you have any estimate on the, the amount saved by the county by refinancing?
I have the, the net interest cost, which is a percentage rate. But the original was 3 point, let's see. The true interest cost was 3.02%. And then on the 2022 is 2.28%. And then again, it's 1.79%. I don't have the actual number of what that equates to, is how many million dollars it equates.
And how many years is it for?
It's 2026 to 2033, I mean, 2033.
Is it paid off then?
Sir?
Is it paid off then?
In 2033, it will pay off. It doesn't change the term or anything, the length of time.
Okay, now we're going to have a test, commissioners? That's the conclusion of regular business. We don't have any citizens who've signed up for non-agenda items? Any comments from commissioners in our open-mic time? We're always open mic, aren't we? Well, as you see, I have a big gap between me and Commissioner Stover. And I just want to thank Chuck Hart for his service. I've got a letter of resignation that's been on our website and other locations, but it's just about six lines. It says, "It was with great personal struggles that I find it necessary to resign my post-three seat on the Pauling County Commission. My resignation is a result of a series of personal family hardships. I'm thankful to God for his guidance in accepting this challenge, and now once again for new direction. Please accept this recognition and know my prayers will be with those who remain and those who serve Charles Hart." So I'm very grateful. I don't know if y'all ever even see this on the website or listen in, but I'm very grateful for the contributions that Chuck made. He's just very even-killed, level-minded, and has helped in so many ways, hadn't he, Tara? With our personnel issues and law enforcement issues. So he's going to be greatly missed, and that's my comment for this morning. So we don't have executive session. Hoorah. The next thing on the agenda is to adjourn. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn by Commissioner Kaker. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stover. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, carries 4-0.